Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting, the Somersville City Council, on this 27th day of February 2023. This time, I'd like to welcome all of our guests. We've got a pretty lofty agenda tonight, so the best thing to do is move right into it. First item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on January 23rd, 2023.
Move to approve and await reading.
Council, we have a first and a second. The motion was to wait for reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes as they were presented in your packets? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Amy, did anybody sign up to speak other than our folks that are on the agenda tonight? Nope? Okay, good deal. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the Somersville Police Department Narcan Recognition. And I'm honored to have with us tonight three of Somersville's finest police officers. We've got Ryan Woods, Tyler Carruthers, and Steve Mullins. Before I bring them to the stage, what I'd like to do is, this is all about a situation that took place in the city of Somersville relative to, or with Somersville officers relative to Narcan. There's some history with Narcan. The city is proudly a member of the Nicholas Intervention Coalition, which I myself have been active with, and so has the police department. I believe that our education and knowledge of Narcan comes through our association and affiliation and support of the Nicholas Intervention Coalition. So with that said, I reached out at the last minute. It's been on my mind for some time. And probably the catalyst and the person behind this and the education, not only to the city, but to our community. We had several events last year where we actually set up at the pavilion, or I should say, this next young lady did, to actually distribute Narcan to citizens. So what I asked her to do is come and just give us a few-minute rundown on Narcan, exactly what it is and the importance of us being supplied with it from a law enforcement standpoint, a city standpoint, and also the citizens of our community. So I'd like to welcome Kim Rowley right now to the podium. And Kim, if you could just give us a little rundown of your Narcan spiel.
Absolutely. My name is Kimberly Rowley. I'm Director of Nursing and Special Projects at Seneca Health Services. I'm also a proud member of the Nicholas Intervention Coalition. So I have Narcan, and I am passionate about every member of the community carrying Narcan. If you have it and never use it, so be it. That's great. But if you come upon any situation and need to give Narcan, you have it. So through the federal grant from Sam Shop and the University of Charleston, Seneca gets free Narcan, and we give it out at community events. We set up, like Mayor said, here for Stable Life Day, gave out several kits across the county that day, and we, like I said, get it for free, and we can give it to anyone. Narcan is one of the safest medications on the market. It can be given to anyone in any circumstance, given a child, and not harm them. If there is an unsuspected or an unwitnessed event, and you find someone unconscious, not breathing well, or not breathing at all, you give this medication first off. It will not interfere if someone's had another medical episode, a heart attack, a stroke, a diabetic incident. It will not hurt paramedics to come in afterward and give them medication for that event. It is 100% completely safe. It can be given to a child, look at those stupid babies. It can be given to a child with no adverse effects. If a child would get a hold of it, play with it, it's not going to hurt them. Narcan is purely an intervention medication. It is a resuscitative medication. It is like giving epinephrine to someone who's heart is stopped. It is not a treatment. It does not treat substance use. It purely makes someone breathe more effectively again. It gives them a second chance at life. What you guys did was save somebody's life, and I appreciate that, and I'm honored to be here with you guys tonight. Narcan, like I said, I can get it to anybody in the community free. Most everybody knows how to get a hold of me. If you can't get a hold of me, call the mayor, and he will get you in touch with me. I'm very passionate about this. I think every household, every persons, every, every family should have this in their home, in their bag, in their sports bag, in their gym bag. You just never know when you might come across someone, and you just don't know what's going on, and you can save their life.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal. So I too carry a Narcan kit in my private vehicle. But what I'd like to do tonight, what's been, what's happened here is, in a very lifesaving way, our three officers that are here tonight to be recognized, U.S. Attorney Will Thompson read an article about the lifesaving measures and actions of the Somersville Police Department. So he was absolutely, you know, so appreciative and thankful and overwhelmed by the fact that, number one, we supply our law enforcement with Narcan, but number two, that they used it and actually saved somebody's life. And so U.S. Attorney Will Thompson called them down to Charleston and commemorated them for their lifesaving event and their actions on duty as a police officer. And it's so important, and you know, a lot of times, people have mixed motions about this because we're talking about sometimes people that have strong bad issues in their lives. And what we have to recognize is that, you know, everybody deserves the chance. And, 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 you know, it's unfortunate because I, in my life, know good people that have been in bad places one time and fallen into bad episodes. And what we don't, what you've got to realize now with this fentanyl that's coming across the border, you know, our youth and just people in our community, and it may be a one instant thing where they come across the situation and they need to be saved, you know, it could be a single incident. And I will also tell you why this is so important for our law enforcement. There was absolutely an episode in Fayette County where an individual threw the drug at the police officer, and he himself had to take several doses of Narcan to save his life. So it's not just protecting the people that have OD'd and need this protection, it's also about protecting those who served in the event that they haven't. All of our officers, our law enforcement, are equipped with Narcan and always will be. So at this time, what I'd like to do is ask Ryan, Steve, and Tyler to come forward. And what we're going to do, just because of their actions and duties as a police officer, we had a special Somersville shirt made up, that by the way, nobody else in the department gets these unless they do something that they deserve, it's special. Now, guys, tell me your sizes so I get the right one. Oh, they're all extra large. Guys, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you did and what you do. So appreciate you guys. Thank you. You always got a speech, Chief. I forgot it at home. Now, again, you know, when I say that the city's been active in the Nicholas Intervention Coalition, we've actually had police officers that have sat on it, as well as Chief Noack has always been an advocate and supporter of policies that are pro to, you know, what we all serve is to better our community. And, you know, we've got a crisis, and it's not individual peoples, it's not certain sector peoples, it's all of our crisis. So appreciate what you guys do, and I'll excuse you now because I know, Stevie, thanks for coming out. Stevie had duty with the kids tonight, and that's what a trip is, to show them the kids.
Mary, think I'll get a photograph?
Oh, yeah, let's get, let's do, let's do. Yep, let's do. Let's get a picture.
Using the chief.
Yep. If you guys want to stand up here. Now, Chief, you don't get in it?
Well, I'm going to have someone take a picture for you.
Why don't you guys get up behind me? Yeah, you got to do a good fight. Get inside. Like Gary. Snap into it here. These guys always look so serious. Quick, get a picture while they're smiling. God, over there. Now, you see their award? Oh, yeah, let's, yeah. Oh, nice.
Thanks, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Wow. Guys, this is what they got from U.S. Attorney. This is what they were presented from U.S. Attorney. Yeah, one of his challenge coins? Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's pretty awesome for the federal government to reach out to a city like Somersville and say, hey, bring the guys up, we want to recognize their. Thanks, man. Appreciate you. Get us out of this meeting, Dad. Okay. All right, it's always great to open a meeting like that. We'll start with the next thing on the agenda, the annual report update at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. We're excited to have, other than our Executive Director, Mary Ann Taylor, present tonight for this update. Mary Ann, welcome.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to be here, so thank you for having me this evening. And I'd like to first start with just a very big and a very heartfelt thank you to Mayor Schaefer and to all of council for always supporting the arena and conference center. For always supporting our endeavors to maintain and continue to develop a first-class conference center. Over the years, we have evolved and become more than just a venue to rent, but a venue that offers many amenities. We now have a very large stock of our own linens, chair covers, sashes, napkins, centerpieces. All of these are great amenities that we're able to offer to those that are getting married, class reunions, and other banquets. The National Guard has replaced the HVAC system in the entire building. We have improved our Wi-Fi by adding fiber optics, and now we have higher speeds and we have the ability for streaming. We refinished the basketball floor, and we've updated the conference center with new lines and new carpet. Our audiovisual equipment is up to date, and we recently updated our first aid station and added a new AED. And we are currently building new shelves so that we can become better organized throughout the building. Like most small businesses, we have had struggles over the past couple of years. We shut our doors in 2020 due to COVID, and then we slowly and cautiously reopened in 2021. But it was, it was a year of rebuilding, but it was also a year of re-identifying the arena and conference center as a multi-use venue that is perfect for small-market meetings, conferences, weddings, banquets, expos, sporting events. In 2022, business was much more like it was in 2019. 90% of our regular customers came back, rescheduled. We saw a 9% increase in new customers in 2022. Our followers on Facebook are consistently increasing every month by 2%. We're still popping up on Page One of Google. We have had, in December of 2022, we had 850 people review our Google profile, which led to 82 clicks to our website. In January of this year, we had 1,835 reviews on Google of our Google profile, which then led to 162 clicks to our website. So our new customers, when they come, I always ask them how they heard about us, and it's always through Google search or word of mouth, one of those two. So Google is, is working very well for us right now. In 2023, this year alone, with only two months into the year, we have already seen a 4% increase into our customer base for this year. Now, these are new customers that have already called and scheduled for this year, but already a 4% increase. Out of the 38 weekends that we have available to rent the arena throughout the year, we have already booked 26 of those weekends. I feel very confident that we will book most of those remaining weekends. I also want to note that out of five of our customers, or I should say, five of our customers that were here in January and February of this year have already rebooked for 2024. In an effort to increase business in the conference center, I plan to begin a digital campaign, hopefully in April, which will focus solely on the conference center, and it'll give us the ability to target meeting planners based on demographic and behavioral data. So these potential customers will see our ads and will be more interested and likely to click on them because this is what they're looking for. I'm also hoping that we will be targeting those people at our competitive conference centers. Every wrestling tournament, every basketball tournament, every expo, every conference that we bring to the arena and conference center not only brings us revenue, but it impacts the hotel motel tax and also the economy of the area businesses from discretionary spending. In January, one wrestling tournament booked 150 hotel rooms. This pa, this month here, we just came off of two basketball tournaments, and each of those basketball tournaments did very close to the same in booking hotel rooms. Now, each of you has a copy of the 2023 West Virginia Vacation Guide, and I've marked it, but if you turn to where I've marked on Page 92, you will see the arena and conference center listed along with the convention centers in Huntington and Charleston.
That's awesome.
I think so, too.
Says big time.
Big time. And this is really the first time that we have been listed with these premier venues. And I feel that the fact that we are listed with these two, with two of the largest convention centers in the state speaks volumes of where we are situated in the market today, and it recognizes us as the premier venue that we've evolved into over the years. Now, I want to say this, we are not competing with those convention centers because we recognize that we are a small-market venue. But what I believe is that we earn the respect of the West Virginia Division of Tourism, and they understand the need for small-market venues, and they want to make us visible to the businesses and organizations who are looking for the services that we offer. And in conclusion, I would like to say that I truly, truly believe that the arena and conference center has a very bright future. And I also think that it opens the doors to the new sports complex to attract those smaller-market competitions. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Council? Hey, one thing I'd like you to highlight, Mary Ann, just because you've diligently been working on it, and it's been in the works for some time. How about just highlighting on the surface, the sign that's going to go up here in the near future?
Yes, I am very excited about this project, but we are working very diligently on getting an LED sign on Route 19. And if you know where the WV is in the grassy area by the Quality Inn, it's going to be in that area. There's actually a great big X up there right now. It's going to be in that area. The sign itself will be seven and a half feet by 12 feet, the LED part. I think the pole is 10 feet, so it makes its total 17.5 feet tall. We'll be able to control the software from my laptop. Jason will have control of it here from the city. I saw a demonstration of this, and it's amazing. I, I believe it will be a game changer for this area. I really do, because we will be able to put every event that's at the arena and conference center up there. So every time a basketball tournament comes, we'll be able to say, welcome. Every time a conference comes, every time we have music at the pavilion downtown, the Potato Festival, there are so many things that we will be able to promote on that sign. And that presence, I mean, 30, we already know that 35,000 cars pass on 19 every day. So all of those people are going to see that sign because you're going to see it on both sides. And we drove it, we used the city's bucket truck to make sure we could see that up there from, you know, coming in both directions. We could see that little bucket, so I feel sure we're going to see, we're going to see this sign. So currently, we've already applied to the Department of Highways with all of that paperwork. I had, the state inspector came to see me on Friday. He is, he's going to sign off on the application. It does have to go to the state, so he's hoping this week that we'll hear from the state that it's been approved. So that's where we are right now, is waiting for the final approval, approval from the Department of Highways. They'll go out to bid then, and, I mean, it's possible, I mean, if things go smoothly and everything happens, that we could have a sign by, by June. I mean, we could have it up there. Again, with the new sports complex coming, you'll be able to use that sign and to recognize things that are happening there. It's been something that I've dreamed about ever for at least the last 13 years, so I'm very excited and very thankful that you all see the importance of that. I do appreciate Jay, the use of his sign every time we have an event up there, but I do think this is going to give us.
This is a game changer.
It is.
It's a game changer. So, Mary Ann, with no questions, thank you so much for what you do, and, and I can't, you know, I mean, it's, it's just an incredible, I mean, your work, your professionalism, and it's, and the other thing I want to make sure I do, because I think it's important, you've got a great team. The folks that work for you, they're dedicated, you know, so, you know, we also salute them for what they do, because, you know, as you well know, when people come and go and they compliment, it's compliment about the facility and your staff. So I know it's been a roller coaster ride with the, with the sign. Council, it's been funded, so if she can get it up, we've already paid for it, it's in this fiscal year budget. So anyway, Mary Ann, just can't say enough about how much I appreciate your dedication and everything you do, because you truly are what I call a rock star. So thank you so much.
And thank you, but I, I will tell you, it is truly, truly, truly my pleasure to be the Executive Director of this conference center. So thank you.
We couldn't be happier. Thank you. Thank you, Trevor. Okay, moving right along. Somersville Public Library update. Glad to have with us tonight Director of the Library, Robin Holmes. Robin, I welcome you to the podium. Well, you can, you can make her come up there when it's time to introduce her at her new role.
Okay. I'm Robin Holmes of Somersville Public Library. The Board of Directors, Tamarra Mullins has resigned, so we would like to see if we could get Lindsey Skidmore to take over her term, which expires in June of 2026. Lindsey is currently Executive Director of the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce, an event coordinator on the Nicholas County Youth League Board of Directors, holds a seat and plays an active role within the Board of Directors for the Somersville Convention and Visitors Bureau. She's on the Potato Festival and the Fair Committees, and she's also a regular member. I think she would be a great addition to the Board of Directors for the library for us, to help us get things done.
Great. Okay, did you, did you have, so do you want us to go ahead and approve that?
If you would.
Okay, Lindsey, if you'd like to step forward. Is there anything special you'd like to say?
I didn't have anything prepared.
You can sit down.
I can't answer any questions.
No, I tell you, Lindsey's going to be a great addition. I've had the honor of working with Lindsey as the Executive Director of the Chamber, and Lindsey, too, is a mover and shaker, and has made great things happen, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce and its respect of our local businesses to what value you have brought to the table with the Chamber, you and your board. So what a great addition. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go ahead and move to appoint Lindsey Skidmore to the Somersville Public Library Board of Trustees, filling the unexpired term of Tamarra Mullins, and your term would expire June 30th of 2026. Entertained a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Welcome, Lindsey.
Hey, thank you.
Robin, did you have any other updates you wanted to give us on the library?
I just wanted to remind everyone what the library actually does, because everybody just thinks we just sit out there and do nothing, so.
Nobody thinks that.
We do passports, notary, copies, faxing, scanning, what we have, Wi-Fi, we have books, eBooks, DVDs, Curiosity Collection. We have seven computers that anyone can come in and use at any time. We have a graphic novel collection. We have interlibrary loans. If we don't have a book in our library, we can get it for you from another library. It would be sent to us, and we will give it to you. We have recently expanded our large print and audiobooks. We have Storytime every week. We have Lego Club every week. We just finished a blind date with a book, if none of you have ever heard of that. We wrapped books, and then we had all these little hearts and all this stuff, and you came in and you would get a book. You didn't know what you were getting. It was wrapped, so that was your blind date. When you got home, you would know what you had. So you could come in, and then we gave you this little thing to fill out, tell us how you liked the book and stuff. So we're going to have a draw-in next week, and we have prizes for, for a family with small children, and also adult will get a pretty nice prize. So just to try and get people to come in. We also have a TV upstairs that has a Nintendo Switch, which is important to kids. I have no idea what this is. My tech people do it. But we have four games that anyone can come in and play at any time. If a parent wants to see if it's worth buying the child a Nintendo Switch, they can come in and use it. We're having a big room sale on the last two weeks of March. If anybody wants to clean out their closets and bring it to us, you can. We have had, let's see, internet and Wi-Fi usage. We usually have around 1,900 a year to come in to use that. Website visits, we've had 4,400. In our library, we have over 33,000 materials. We have 308 books on CD, audiobooks that anyone can come in and check out. We have 1,095 DVDs people can come in and check out. We have had, we have an annual attendance of around 11,856 people that come into the library on yearly basis, if not more. So I just wanted everybody to see, there's only three of us that work there. We're all three full-time, and you can always find us there.
So Robin, thank you for giving us that update. I also would like to thank you and your staff. I've had the opportunity to participate in many of the activities that you guys host. I think it's great when you reach out with those kind of things to our community. And it's really exciting when I can come to the library and see that it's just not a library full of books, that you're doing a lot of things to, to bring our children in and all of those that visit the library along. So appreciate you and your staff and all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the lift station. Oh, wait, nope, I about missed it. Boy, that, how could I do that? The next, actually, I put a line through it too, too early. The next item on the agenda in a real exciting way is our mural committee. They've got a presentation for us tonight, and we're happy to have with us Lauren Bean, who I would say is kind of our chairperson of the committee. So Lauren, I'd welcome you to the podium, and it's all about the approval of the YouSave Corner Mural, and, and a big way, you've got the artists here tonight, too. It's also exciting. So the floor is yours, Lauren.
This is Blake. He's from Marmet. He is who we have chosen. So this is his design, and that is on the actual building, as you can see. So we just, you know, wanted to highlight the Somersville Lake, all the recreation we have to offer here to try to pull some people into our downtown area. We thought this was a really great spot, because you can see it kind of, you know, as you come into Somersville. It is fully funded. We got $10,000 from the Nicholas Foundation, and then we're going to use $10,000 from the 25 that the council has given us. to use ten thousand dollars from the twenty-five that the council has given us. Um, the city is going to provide the lift, um, and then that twenty thousand includes all the material and labor. So he is here if anyone has any technical questions. Um, the only thing that has, is going to change in here is, um, we decided as a committee to add in a fishing pole a little more prominently, so that'll either go like on the kayak, um, or the guy that's on the trail with the dog, maybe his stick will become a fishing pole.
Right.
That's really about the only change. So we're just seeking approval for our design.
Yeah. So do you, would you like to highlight that the owners have less?
Yes, yeah, and both owners, tall side and short side, are good with the design as well, so. If anybody here has any qualms.
Okay. Is that all, uh, on those, uh, of, all of that is on that building?
Yes, all of this will go on that building.
Yeah, so if you go down there, Gene, and you pull around the corner, you'll see how the one part is like two stories.
Right.
So that'll be the bigger part, and then, of course, the long piece that runs down will be that, that piece that's on the, on the left-hand side of the bigger part. I think it's awesome. I think you did an incredible job. Um, I think, um, you know, after, um, much thought and, and, you know, the committee really honing in on, um, so it goes back to the committee giving you the vision. I think you took their vision and did an excellent job. I'm thrilled with it. Um, I think it captures Somersville, um, and captures one of the biggest attractions we have in Somersville, which is the lake and Long Point. Um, and then again, as we try to capitalize on, um, what we're going to become, the new gateway to the National Gorge, uh, the new park, um, New River National Gorge Park, um, um, to me, it just, it's a home run. And I also like the fact that this is welcome to Somersville. Um, i- it's just a, a grand slam. I can't wait to sit on the walls.
Um, I've heard to say that timeline-wise, we're looking this spring, so once the weather breaks, like April, May timeframe, it'll get started.
Yeah. Now, the only question I have is, is this going to have the same protective coat as yours, the one we did on, okay? And that's all in the budget, the whole nine yards?
Yeah.
Yeah. So from start to finish, weather cooperating, how long will it take you to do that?
My plan right now is just do the large wall first to tackle that and take time off. I have a day job, so I'll be taking time off and trying to do it in nine days around, or all finished or almost finished.
Okay.
Um, that's my plan anyway, you know, like you said, weather, barking and,
Yeah.
um, and then the following weekends, maybe three, four weekends to do the long part of the wall.
Great, okay. Now, do you do that by yourself, or do you have a team of people that help you?
I have a couple of people that'll be helping me, my, uh, thanks, a couple of family members.
Okay.
Yeah, on the first part, and then, um, I've kind of, the rest of it's just me, yeah.
Great, great.
In comparison, the mural we put up before, they did that in a little over two weeks, and they did the same thing. They came and then brought some of their family members to help fill in, so.
Great, great. Okay, council, do you have any questions? Okay, council, I do apologize. I intended to get the copy of that in your packet, um, so that you had time to, um, review it. But what I would go ahead and do, this is, uh, about the endorsement and approval of the owners, the endorsement and approval of the committee. Um, I think the artist did a wonderful job. I think this is very, it's going to be a great addition to that corner downtown Somersville. So at this time, what I'd like to do is move for approval for the YouSave Corner mural, um, tonight, which would be what's being displayed as you see. We got a first and a second. Counsel, are there any discussions or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Now, what I would like to say before Lauren leaves is, of course, I want to commend you like I have everybody else, because you and your team have been awesome to work with, and you've been a great leader. Um, council, in a future meeting, we will be renaming the mural committee, um, to the beautification committee, um, for the city of Somersville. Um, you know, we've, we've kind of reevaluated, and we don't know that just putting mural after mural after mural up is, is exactly where we want to go, um, but we've had a lot of ideas come before the committee on things that we could do that would be just pure beautification projects, um, to enhance our downtown and Somersville living area. So, um, probably the next month, or the, you know, in the very near future, we'll be renaming the committee to the beautification. I will tell you, there's one last project that's, that's, um, on the radar, um, with the mural committee, and that's, they're going to do some work with a tile project up at Old Main, um, and that's going to be a neat project, because it'll be a, a mural at Old Main, um, and that will be a really neat mural, because the way that's all going to pan out is it will be decorated and put together by children. Um, they will actually take a tile and paint the tile, and then the tiles will all be put together in a mass mural at Old Main. Um, also, on the big side of the building up there, when you look up there, it's kind of ugly to look at, um, we're also entertaining maybe a past and present, um, that facility mural on the side of that. But right now, that's all that's on the radar from the mural standpoint, um, but the beautification, as they've been so committed and diligently worked on behalf of bettering the city of Somersville, we're excited what they're going to bring to the table when they start looking at the bigger picture, the broader, um, Somersville area, and what we can do from a beautification standpoint. So we're excited about what the future brings. So, young man, thanks for coming up tonight. I know it was a haul to get here. Um, we're excited about what you're going to do in our downtown area. So did we vote? I know I got a motion, I couldn't remember if we voted. So thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the lift station property from Blue Chip Management LLC. Counsel, that, that is in your packet, and, um, uh, basically, um, uh, the, the Blue Chip Management Group, which is the Ferguson Group, um, they've decided to go ahead and deed over to us, um, the property that we have a lift station on. Of course, currently what we do is we have the rideaway and the whole nine yards access to the lift station, um, but they, what they would like to do is go ahead and just deed us, um, the property, the tract for the lift station, and, and it's all spelled out in that, in, in your, in your packet on exactly what they're giving us. Um, so, um, I hope you all had an opportunity to review it, what I would do at this time. And by the way, they're giving it to us, there's no charge. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to accept, um, the, the, uh, the lift station property.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Counsel, are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. I will also tell you that the survey that was done, we're going to pay the ticket on, um, for the lift station, and so I have that invoice for a thousand dollars that we will pay the invoice for the survey that, that we needed to be able to accept it into the city, um, per the survey. So, um, we'll be taking care of that bill, but it's a great addition to our utility portfolio, because now we own the, the, uh, not only the property, but the rideaway. Okay, moving right along. The next thing I would like to do is appoint, um, the Engineer Selection Committee for the Visitor Center. Um, I would like to appoint James Corbett, Chuck Shaw, and Gary Roberts. Um, in an interesting way, Gary Roberts has stepped forward on behalf of the county and asked to be involved, um, in the Visitor Center. He's actually going to be on the committee, which will be named soon, um, but it's good to bring the county in and wrap them around, um, this Visitor Center, because it truly will be a Visitor Center that will capture the entire county from border to border on what we have available in Nicholas County, as well as market the region, and I'm talking before you get to us and after you get to us. So, um, this is going to be a great thing. So anyway, that doesn't need a motion, that's just a mayor appointment to that, um, selection committee. And by the way, um, the RFP has been run, um, three, um, companies have applied, and so what this committee will be doing is vetting those three companies that applied to be the engineer architect representing our Visitor Center. Um, the next item on the agenda is discussion of Article 505, Animal and Fowl Ordinance, and nobody more prepared for this than our city reporter, Gary, with the,
Thanks, guys. Um, just a, just a quick rundown, just wanted to make sure that this city council was, was well aware of what was taking place. Um, I think a lot of it is driven by, uh, the current egg prices and things of that nature, but we, uh, are now, um, fielding phone calls, uh, both for and against, um, chickens in our area. Uh, I, I want everybody, if you have that in front of you, please look at that. Um, we highlighted a couple of, a couple of spots here, the 505.02, the 505.04 recently did come into play. Um, the 505.02, uh, was the first, uh, the first complaints were rolling in on that right there. Um, we had several that had caught in and was complaining about the running at large, um, chickens, um, crossing the streets, going into mall areas and, and personal, uh, yards, uh, that was, uh, quite a nuisance. And, uh, we went through, through our attorney, Greg Tucker, on this. We certainly handled the situation. The chickens were, um, gathered up and put away in a coop, and, uh, so far, no other issues have, have occurred, okay? Um, moving on to 505.04, um, and I want you to know that this will be a part of my agenda on March seventh, uh, planning and zoning. I don't want to steal my, my recorder's report, but on March seventh, this will be, uh, addressed with the, uh, planning and zoning, looking and, and taking a look at this ordinance. Um, the reason I'm approaching you today is basically, uh, Greg Tucker, uh, suggested I speak to the council on this, because, uh, in this 505.04, as you can read there, um, it says, "No live poultry, fowl, or animal of any kind except dogs and cats shall be kept in the city without the owner thereof having received a permit so to do so from the city recorder." And, and the key word there is "and," approval of the council. So I wanted to, since it, it does say "and council," I wanted to bring it to you, uh, to let you know about this, uh, hoping that we might be able to discuss it just, just for a second. I don't want to go into detail, detail, but it, uh, is a policy issue, uh, so I, I did want to approach you. I do have a couple of, uh, personal opinions on it, uh, due to just basically listening to the, um, to the community, folks that have called in, uh, for and against. Um, you know, I, I feel that with chickens, a personal, personal opinion of mine would be, um, chickens, you know, I, I think of chickens, I think of prey and predator, okay? Um, if, if we bring the chickens into the city, you know, there's a lot of issues that can, that can occur. I know our code official will become much busier if it's in the city. Uh, he'll begin an inspector of chicken coops and things of that nature. Um, but more importantly to me is what these chickens will bring in in relation to prey and predators. Um, you'll begin seeing more coyotes, foxes, skunks, things of this nature. Um, so, you know, that is a concern of mine, but, uh, I would like to open it up if, see if there's any opinions on this at all from the council.
The only thing I would say is prey, predators, and chicken shit.
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah.
So what do we want?
Yes, yes. So, um, that's sort of where we are, uh, right now. It's not a, a huge issue, but it's coming. And I can, I, I've heard of others, and I just would like to try to jump into this and try to handle it. I feel that would,
So Gary, how many people do you think now we have in the city with chickens?
Um, I, I really do not know. Um, going by,
So the cases you're working with, how many different people are you working with, with chickens?
So far, one case at the moment.
Okay.
Um, and they currently have chickens. They have, um, a chicken coop.
And that, but their chickens were running in the neighborhood?
Yes, and they are now in their coop. And I do want to commend those folks, because after the complaints and after we had to approach, they handled it very, very well. I mean, they came in very politely, discussed it, um, and, uh, I'm going to be getting back to them soon with some decisions, but they handled it very well.
Has the city issued any permits?
No.
Okay.
Okay, no.
We don't, we don't have a big file of permits.
No, we do not have a file of permits. Matter of fact, this is, you know, this was written back in, what, the sixties? Um, it says there's an application process, uh,
But doesn't one place of the ordinance say chickens aren't allowed?
Yes.
Or fowls not allowed, and then the next place says, oh, it is allowed, but you got to get,
With a permit.
With a permit, but you got to get the recorder and the council to approve it.
What about grandfather?
Well, I could see that. However, I, I have no permits, uh, currently. Um, I've not given any permits, and on record, I know of, I, I do know of permits that has never been given.
But obviously, you know that
I know of ones that for sure.
There, there's been several people in this area that had larger little tracts of crockery and had cows and horses and chickens and,
Correct. I'm happy to have been able to give all of your,
So, counsel, what do you think about chickens? You used to be something about eggs and chicken salad, I don't remember what it was.
I raised them one time where I live, a long time ago.
Well, as a dog owner.
But you had a permit, right?
I said I was grandfather.
Oh, you are grandfather, maybe, are you?
I don't think that, I mean, you've got a, uh,
Ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, you've got an ordinance there that says what,
So you think that, so you like the idea that they can go to the recorder and get a permit, and it's got to be approved by the recorder in the city?
Yes, it has to be, that's the only way.
That's what the rule says.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess what, what the deal is, um, you know, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, from the gist of what I've gotten in this whole situation is, the neighbors that live around the chicken coop, um, have, have been very dissatisfied with, um, the activity that's taking place on their property. Now, the difference is, they were running loose, they were turned loose, I guess, in the daytime, recouped at night, now they're in the coop all the time. But, you know, I, I think it comes down to seriously, I mean, um, and then, and then I, and then, you know, I, I think if, uh, if, if there is a chance that we want to permit chickens in the city, then I think what we got to do is define what that looks like. Um, because, um, you know, uh, and it's not just our city that deals with this. I remember, um, years ago, a, a big time issue with a physician that worked at Somersville Hospital that had a, a, a big time chicken issue down in Fayetteville, in the city of Fayetteville. Um, and, uh, so, you know, I think, I think what Gary's asking for is feedback. If you don't have it tonight, I ask you to go home and think about it, call him up and tell him, because he's getting ready to take it to planning and zoning, because I can tell you that the overwhelming people that have weighed in on this issue say, "We don't want chickens in city lands." That's the overwhelming people that have weighed in on the issue. Now, have we gone out and solicited or done a poll? No, but the people I hear from, they're not for chickens in the city. And, and so I think what they're looking for is they've got to rewrite this ordinance, because in one step it says no, the next step it says you can with a permit, so that's what they're getting ready to do. What do we want that to look like? Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, if, as you're speaking about this, it reminds me of the word, uh, variance, and I think you're going to find that the neighbors beside that chicken coop want something said, and it's not in our ordinance now. We may even want to look at that, it's just a suggestion, because you may want to have certain people sign off, uh, if they're going to accept that chicken coop, you know, in their neighborhood, for whatever reason, yeah.
Was, it seemed like, is there something in there?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, yeah, that's in there.
Five hundred feet?
Yeah, yeah. So what they do is, this is, this is the rule. They're supposed to come in and apply for this permit, and along with that application, they're supposed to have signatures from any neighbor that is within five hundred foot of the coop, and they must have a majority number of signatures signed on it. So if there's four of them, they need to have three that say, yeah.
What if it doesn't have anybody in five hundred mile, or five hundred feet?
Yeah, go for it.
Another issue.
Yeah, go for it. Yeah, yeah, it's a good question, that's, that's, that's a great question.
I mean, I could go right now in my backyard, we're stopping at five hundred feet, anybody.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Cities are, cities are size. Cities are size. Ordinance of all those, I mean, is there any that allow?
Uh, yeah, there are some that allow, um, most do not. Uh, I think Richwood has an ordinance that says they allow chickens, but they don't I think Richwood has an ordinance that says they allow chickens, but they don't allow roosters.
So can you explain to us, Gary, if you don't have roosters, if you have eggs?
I'm not qualified. I'm not a biologist.
You don't have roosters, you're gonna run out of chickens.
So I don't understand what the purpose would be to have a lot of chickens without a rooster, I mean. Okay, so on a serious note, council, Gary's asking and soliciting for feedback. You need to go away, think about it. Reach out to him tonight if you get an opportunity. Talk to some of your constituents and, and find out, you know, where do we want to go with this? And all I can tell you that I'm always sensitive to these kind of issues because what I think about is what I want this activity next to my house. And, and so, you know, and, and some of our neighborhoods in the city, I think if people wanted to live, to have chickens and cows, although I do understand, we have a couple tracks in town, and, and really that speaks to the heritage of this city coming together. It's not us reinventing the wheel, but, you know, I, I just think about, you know, you know, preserving our neighborhoods and so on and so forth, and let's not wish something on somebody we wouldn't want ourselves. So, you know, if there could be an exception where, you know, you could literally hide it on your property, I don't know what that hurts anybody. But so to say, you know, we can't allow it at all, you know, might be, you know, might be out there, but again, I don't wish anybody on anything that I don't want at my house. And if I want a farm, I'm gonna live on a farm. Yeah, so. Okay, so Gary, we look forward to the feedback. We'll just ask, give you feedback individually. Okay? All right, that moves us right into your recorder's report.
Yeah, just a small recorder report. I did want to just mention that I had a great time at the meetings. Had a lot of good information thrown at me in three days down in Charleston, the mayor and I went. I did want to pass along to you, I think it's one of the things that I really got the most out of, other than the election, the day of election training that I had, was something that was, I think, possible in those who now. That I think is really critical for our council to remain involved and to get involved in this. What I'm passing to you right now is from the two thousand twenty-three legislation session, session that we just came from. And on the front of this, it says bills of interest. This is what the league supports and really fights for and on, on this particular session. The mayor and I also participated in this, going over to the Capitol, discussing some things. There's several things on here that they, that the league is supporting this year. I'll just talk about one, the very first one, HB. Bill HB twenty-four seventy-one relates to the suspension of a driver's license for unpaid tickets. What this does is allows driver's license suspensions after payment plans is delinquent for six months. So that gives you a little bit more teeth in some of those delinquencies. He says, "Why do we like it?" Enables enforcement of municipal fines and compliance with payment plans. Where it is, right now, it's in the House Judiciary Committee. The folks that Robert and I spoke to were pretty much all in favor of that. I don't think I had anybody that was not. But there are a few other House bills there. I encourage you to, you know, reach out, continue to look at these things, reach out to, to our local folks and get in touch with them and talk to them about that. On the backside, I'll highlight the first one there, but there's another list of, of bills that's, that the league is opposing. This bill, twenty-eight forty-two, it repeals, and I think this is huge, I mean, super huge for us and other small, small markets and other small municipalities and large ones too, to repeal the municipal license and tax when state license is required. What it does, it eliminates municipal business license and tax. Okay? That's a, I hear Robert say this a lot, our mayor, it's a game changer. This would certainly be a game changer, not to be able to, to charge for licensing and taxing. Right now, it's in the House Government Organization Committee. It's not out of there yet, but it's certainly, I think this may be the second time it's came up.
Which ones, Gary?
The very first one, HB twenty-eight forty-two. So, you know, keep these things in mind, try to stay in track, in, in track with it. I will continue to be engaged with the municipality league. So when I see things like this, I'll try to pass along to you as I get information to. They are terrific to work with. Currently, I, the recorder's office, I am working on an annexation ordinance and it's been, it's, it's been interesting and certainly it's something that I've never done before. But with the help of the municipal league, they have just been terrific. I can call them at any point in time and they have helped me through it. They've actually turned me on to other cities and areas, other municipalities that are going through. This particular annexation is different than, than most. I know Amy will agree with this. This is where the municipality actually owns the land and it is a little different, different ballgame. So we have that over at our attorney's office right now and he's going through that and it, it, it looks, it looks really good. So next with the planning and zoning, we're gonna have to be addressing, I know the chickens was an issue, another issue that is beginning to appear. And these are things that didn't happen in the sixties when ordinances were written, but tiny homes, you know, tiny homes is now appearing. And people are, you know, discussing right now, I know two people discussing buying a tiny home, putting it in their backyard and renting it. Okay? So these things are, are beginning to appear and I think it's really up to, to myself and our, our planning and zoning commission to address and to look at some of these and try to get ahead of the game before we get into some bad situations. So again, March seventh, we'll have another planning and zoning meeting. That'll be at six o'clock right here. Everybody's invited. And if you have any questions, I'm not putting to any right now. I do want to say, I, I did sit in on, I, I've never really done this before, but I sat in on the board meeting for the municipal league and I, I want everybody to know that it's, you know, it was, it was a pleasure sitting in on that and also it was nice to know that our mayor is, and he sits on their board. So it was, it was a lot of fun to go in there and listen to what they're doing and I appreciate our mayor, Robert, getting in there and being a big participant on that, on that board.
So he did talk?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah. He's always gonna say something, but he.
Didn't say a word.
He didn't say a whole lot that day, so he's good.
Okay, Gary, thank you. Great report. So let me give, let me give just a brief update on this stuff because it, it's enough to drive you crazy. You know, a couple of, a couple of, one, a bill that's not even highlighted on this that's now made it to the floor and it's crazy. But, you know, here's House Bill three five five four. And what it does is it's going to basically, the language wants cities to approve uniform language governing rental properties. So now what it's saying is, is basically what this bill is, is although it's discussed as a short-term rental bill, it's limited, but it can affect cities' ability to regulate any rental property in their city. Now what, what drives me nuts is, because I reach out to our legislators on a regular basis, all the time about this stuff. Another one that really, that really, you know, we were kind of told that maybe it wouldn't get anywhere, well, it's somewhere now. But if you flip the page, House Bill thirty seventy-five, to clarify, the municipal BNO tax should only apply to the owner of a contract and not subcontractor. Let me tell you what's gonna happen if that bill makes it through. And, and, you know, of course, the contractors union and, and associations push this big time, but if we don't have the ability to charge BNO tax to subcontractors, what do you think every contractor's gonna claim he is or she is in our city? They're subcontractors. Okay? And again, you know, you know, I plead, Gary went with me, we went around to all, all the offices, hours plus some, as, as you get interested in this stuff and build relationships. And I tell them, please, leave us alone. Regulate the state, you know? They are constantly, I, I mean, I don't even know what promulgates this stuff, why they claw and claw and claw on the cities, you know? I thought that their business was they wanted the federal business, the federal government out of their business so they could run a state. Well, technically, we want the state out of our business so we can run a city. And you can't take something from us without allowing us to, to get it somewhere else. So anyway, there, there's a lot of movement, you know? You know, it's sad because there's some good work that's done down in Charleston. I commend them for going down there, but there's too many people that have agendas that are personal agendas and, and, and it's one favor after another. And to me, a lot of what goes on, a lot of these bills are reckless. They're just simply reckless. They don't do anything to promote the prosperity in our state, which a lot of that work's being done in the cities. So, and, and really what we need to do, we need to change the corner, turn a corner here, and, and we've got to get this information to you all and you need to be doing the texting and the calling like we are. I mean, we really need to bring, bring you along with this education because this stuff's important. And it's sad to say, but I pray when the session's over. I mean, I do, I just can't wait until, we were down there, actually, we were down there on turnover day, which was the last day bills could be introduced, but they, they banked them here and banked them there. This one's shelved, this one's here. And then, and then lo and behold, before it's all over with, because they're already in the system, they, they come to the floor, they start getting movement, and here it is, you know, getting towards the end of session. And that's just like some of this stuff that's going on here, it's just, it's just enough to drive you crazy. So if you ever do get the ear of a local legislator, I just encourage you to say, hey, do us a favor, take care of the state and let cities and municipalities set ordinances and regulate their own cities. We don't need the state telling us what ordinances are good for us and not good for us.
Is that home rule not to help us?
Well, it does, but, but it does, but they, they, they can still regulate it and that's what the move is now, is to put more tighter regulation on short-term rentals. I mean, there's a bill out there again, and then what they've done is they've spilled over into not just short-term rentals, but all rentals. So, you know, it captures everything. So anyway, the important thing is, is we need to do a better job disseminating misinformation so you all can help us combat, defeat this stuff. Because I gotta tell you something, when you reach out and, and talk to them, you know, another bill that, that I personally got real active in and went right to the chair of the committee was where they're trying to make cities pay jail bill. And, and so the thing I presented to them is, is okay, I got, I get it. And, and Jack Woodrum, who's the chair of that committee, fortunately, he used to be a county commissioner, so he understands the fee, and I do too, the mess they've got paying those state jail bills. But this is what I said to them. The county gets a pass from the state because they don't maintain any of the county roads. City don't get that pass. I said, "So you take the jail bill and look at what it does to a county bill. And you take the city, or I mean, a county budget, the jail bill and what it does to a county budget, but then you take, you take our street department and maintaining the fifty-two, fifty-four miles of streets we do in the city of Somersville, and that's paving and snow removal and ditch work and drainage and culverting and so on and so forth, that's a big ticket item." And so, you know, and actually, when I, when I brought that to them, they're like, oh, wow, we've never really, nobody's ever presented it to us that way. Well, that's something that's in our budget that's not in the county because the state takes care of the county road. There are roads that are county roads, but the state takes care of that. We don't have that privilege. So anyway, that's, that's a big bill that's been floated down there to try to get us to pay seven days worth of, of anybody that we jail. That'd be a big hit to our budget. And let me tell you this, think about little cities, how would they do it? You know, how would they ever, how would little cities ever do it? I mean, they're scratching two dimes together to make a quarter or a nickel, two nickels to make a dime. And, and, I mean, they literally don't have the money. They're lucky to have one police officer and now they want to tag them with jail bills. It'll never work, it'll never work. So anyway, let me move right into the mayor's report. Let me tell you, council, Citizens Police Academy, we had one before and it was very successful. I'm proud of the police department stepping up and trying a second round. It's currently open for applications. Chief, speak to it. How does one get into the police academy or an application?
You can fill out an application, go to the city website, www.somersvillewb.org. And at the bottom of the page, there is a place where you can print out and fill out the application. Or you can come to the city office, police department and get an application and fill it out and turn it in here.
Outstanding. Thank you, chief. The next thing I want to address is Brown Oaks Roaring Twenties Costume Party. Council, I ask you to please consider being a part of this. This is, this is all in part of the great leadership of Brown Oaks under the executive directorship of Bill Anderson and doing an event every month at Brown Oaks to celebrate the century celebration, one hundred years of Brown Oaks. So March eighteenth at seven PM is a Roaring Twenties Costume Party. Mayor Schaefer's gonna go as a gangster. So come and join the company. Always wanted to be a gangster, so I'm gonna go as a gangster to the Roaring Twenties Party. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, they've still got tickets available, so I encourage you to, to participate and support this very important event for the city of Somersville, the celebration of the, the hundred years of Brown Oaks.
March what?
It's, it's March eighteenth. Event seven PM, tickets are on sale here, you can buy them here at City Hall. Council, mark your calendars, there was a calendar change. I hope you got the notification via email, but the city of Somersville Budget Committee has now been moved, this is the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, it's been moved to three six twenty-three, one week from today here at City Hall at six PM. The last thing I'd like to address, many of you are aware, some of you were actually boots on the ground during the event and I appreciate that. I happened to be out of town, but we did have a major flooding situation that was very unfortunate, that happened in Terra Estates. Actually, did cause some flood damage to one home and was getting real close to having some damage to others, but also it, it caused some inability to get in and out of Terra during the situation. So I've had multiple people reach out to me on the wonderful job the city of Somersville did to respond to it. So again, hats off to Gus Rader and his crew, we kept a man out there all night long. And then I will tell you that I engaged first thing in the morning on solution and fortunately got the cause of the problem, which was a private property owner on down the way, to immediately step up and, and put things in motion to rectify the situation, which I'm telling you, we had heavy equipment rolling down nineteen and there's a culvert now that's being worked on that will be the permanent fix, but it's not a cheap deal. But I will say that in the morning when I contacted the property owner, the causation of the situation, very respectful conversation we had and immediately we went to work on resolve. And, and so it's unfortunate that it came to that situation, but I can tell you that the response to fixing the problem was exactly what we needed. And, and I'm glad that the individual property owner that was, the causation of the situation stepped up like they did. And as we speak today, the new culvert is being worked on, being put in, and it'll be a permanent solution, but we've still got a ways to go. So Stevie, I know you were boots on the ground, thank you, I was out of town. Is there anything you'd like to add?
The, the guys at the street department, I mean, fantastic. They were great, they were there, watched them, I mean, even as it rose in the night, which was not expected, the, the extreme issues that we're facing there, but they were there, helped us get in and out of the, of our little community there. And it was, I mean, great. Austin was there all night. So, I mean, big coach, those guys did great, James and his crew, awesome. Can't say nothing about those guys.
Good deal. Yep, we, we, and I, and I, and I should highlight that we had some utility folks out too, but the core and the gist of managing the event was the street department and so, you know, hats off to them. So, okay, council, do you have any questions of Gary's report or my report? Hearing none? What I'd like to do is move into executive session for a brief executive session. Oh, wait, is there any council comments or reports? Sorry about that, council, didn't mean to skip over. Okay? Entertain a motion to move into executive session. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you all, thanks, Mary Ann. See you, chief.